Six o'clock.
Sounds good, Erica. Thank you. Just wait a minute for a couple more people to sign on here. I see Jim. I see Matthew.
Charity, Grant, Stephen Cohen and Stephen Mori are all on.
Okay, just waiting for Stephen Mori to connect. And then we'll start. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board Short Termal Subcommittee Meeting on Tuesday, June 11th, from six to eight this evening. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Couple little minor housekeeping things. I think we'll, we'll see how far we get this evening on continued discussion on the zoning articles. And there are at, at least one or a couple of folks that have been waiting on the general bylaw discussion. So I think we'll start that on Thursday, regardless. And also, we are running out of our allotted number of meetings slash hours here. So we'll see how that goes. And then do have public comments scheduled for Thursday evening. I, I, that's pending. We'll see how far we get through tonight. We, we only have four hours left to, to continue plowing through all the provisions, et cetera. And then we do have two meetings held for next week, just in case. Obviously, we're getting into the summer and everyone's busy plans and, and all that stuff. So those are just in case we need them. I'm sure they'll be. Like somebody was unmuted there. And those are just in case. And that's possible that those, that could be a or both public comment sessions in addition, or, or as well. So we'll, we'll, we'll see how far we get through this evening. And I was thinking tonight, we could start with either, tell me what the groups think, either Grant's question that's in our packet on owner operated, owner operator, or just start plowing through the chart again and trying to pow down, plowed, plow through.
Tom, I think that Grant's owner definition is really a, a drafting situation. And we should get through the issues before we concentrate on like definition, that kind of like implementations.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to, wanted to see what the, what prioritization, prioritization that should have. Erica, may I ask you put up Grant's chart?
Sorry, I'm trying to mute people as they come in because they're chatty. Give me one sec.
Sure.
Is this, this should be the with changes. Okay. This is the one you guys were working on last week.
Yes. Yes. Okay, so, starting from the beginning here, I know not everybody is clearly on board with number one, but I, I'm personally hearing some consensus on this definition of short-term vacation rental slash limited slash vacation rental, or however, however would be best to call it. I'm sure John, Town Council's been thinking about that. But it seems like to me, since it's number one, was a good place to jump off, but also that, that there, there, that there seems to be some emerging consensus on that. Does the groups have anything to add or anything they thought about since our last meeting last Thursday? Charity, yeah, since you're on the margin here, I can, if you raise your hand or say something, then I can see you easily. Charity, please go ahead. Charity, you're muted?
I'm asking her to unmute.
Okay.
In. But I don't know what's going on with her. Matt, maybe you can text Charity and ask her what's up? Like if she's having computer problems.
It's Matt. I'll do that.
Oh, I meant Matt Peel, but whichever, Matt.
Either one.
Stephen, do you want to, since we'll do the, the alphabetical, do you want to? If anything else new to say, or should we, should we more jump into the grants gray area here?
I mean, I'd rather move on to the stuff where we ended last week, because I think we made some good progress on the stuff we talked about last week and could make some of that progress on, on the items we didn't get to yet.
Okay, so we left off at, I believe, seven? Is that correct? I am missing my note.
I don't seem to remember a consensus on seven, so that's probably where we ended up.
Okay. So six and seven are obviously somewhat related. Charity, can you hear? Can you unmute still? Probably not. Okay.
I'm gonna lower her hand for now, and if she gets situated and raises it again, I'll, I'll let her, I'll do that.
Okay, thanks, Erica.
Yep.
Well, seven, let's, let's just jump into seven. And until Charity or Matthew come back on, I'll just, we'll continue with the alphabetical order. So I'll, I'll jump to Stephen and Stephen. Anything new to add on that?
So I, I think we discussed in six, that, that, you know, there, there seemed to be some consensus on the idea of limiting the number of weeks in July and August and not limiting the number of weeks in outside of the summer, that core period. And I think that the suggestion that I made at the end of that meeting was that that also might be a tool to discourage investor-focused STRs by allowing less weeks, if you have owned your property for less than a certain amount of time, I would say, maybe three years. And I don't know if you want to talk about that suggestion?
Sure. Yeah. How's the other, how do the other groups until Charity is able to come? Matthew, do you want to jump in on that for Charity for your group, please?
Yeah. We're not talking about weeks. We're talking about changes of occupancy.
Yes.
Yeah, I, yeah, change, definitely. Sometimes we say weeks or leases or whatever, but I think we, we consistently mean changes of occupancy.
Thanks.
Matthew?
Yeah, thanks. I, I just spoke with Charity. She's just having some computer problems. She's trying to get it on our iPad. So hopefully she'll get that fixed here shortly. You know, I this one, it's, I, I understand the issue. I understand the, the issues are, are, you know, not wanting to limit in the shoulder seasons. I still firmly believe that that's where the majority of the problems come from. As a shoulder seasons, you know, especially with the neighborhoods. I, I think Cherry and I are pretty close on the same page here as far as, you know, I really like the idea of seeing like a 12-week limit. And our 12 turnover limit, excuse me, per year. And then you know, either six or seven of those are allowed in, in the July. I really like the seven-day minimum in July. I know there was some pushback on that. So yeah, I would prefer.
Matthew, can I clarify? Did you mean seven-day minimum rental or seven days for the total month?
Seven. Seven-day minimum a week, basically rental in the summer.
Got it. Okay, just want to clarify.
Yeah.
Stephen, I'll just, I'll let Charity go since she.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I, my computer, I went into the shop today. I think there's, there's room here to, to try to come to a consensus of some kind around the changes of occupancy. And I, you know, and, and a certain number of minimum or maximum, whatever, minimum numbers of stays during July and August. And I'll catch up with the rest of the conversation as it goes on.
Okay, Stephen or Grant?
Yeah. Sorry, just. So I guess the question is, that I have, is do people like the idea of, of having a certain amount of changeovers? When you have owned the property for less time, and then another amount to changeovers when you've owned it for more, which I think I would suggest maybe three years. Is, is, you know, I, I really think it could be one, but I think three is good. And, and I think by doing that, what we're doing is two things. We are encouraging people to be a part of the community before they get the full benefit. And, and we're putting a significant stumbling block economically in front of people who want to just rent it out and, and don't have any interest in our community. If you can only get, you know, so many weeks for the first three years, it makes it much harder to make the math work. And in fact, we've seen, you know, literally dozens of times, people have demonstrated that doing an STR with no rules really is difficult to make work economically. So if you, if you have a limitation on your weeks, it basically makes it impossible. And I think that if people have over and over and over and over and over said, our goal is to discourage investor-focused STRs, I think that is a good way to do it. And without penalizing people who are a part of community by saying you can have a more robust number of weeks, if you've owned for three years.
Got it. I'm going to go to John Giorgio.
John, you're muted? There we are. Sorry about that. I understand Stephen's point, and I understand Charity's point, but I would like to make a plea for simplicity. I think we are already at the point here where this is going to be very complicated, very difficult to administer and enforce, and very difficult to explain to the voters at a town meeting. I think, while I understand Stephen's three-week, I'm sorry, three-year sort of entry, that I think presents a significant barrier to people purchasing homes in Nantucket who need to rent, rent their homes for a period of time in order to pay the mortgage. And we've heard that story many, many times. I, I don't, again, it's going to be very difficult to enforce. So I would ask you all to think seriously about making this as simple as possible. And I'm not saying too liberal or too permissive, but simple. If you don't make it simple, I, I don't know how we can expect it to pass a town meeting.
Malcolm?
Well, John took the words out of my mouth. It's, the more complicated it is, the more difficult it is going to be to enforce, the more resources it's going to take. And I would just urge, I said last week, simplicity. Or it's, it's, it's going to be confusing. People aren't going to support it, and it won't be enforceable.
Got it. I'm going to go to Jim, then Grant, then Stephen Mori, then Stephen Cohen, then Charity.
Thanks. Grant, are you okay with me taking this first?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right. So I would like to address the issue of simplicity and also the issue of enforcement. And suggesting a compromise that may, may give us a, a resolution of number nine down below, which, which is a real problem. If I could just ask for a minute time to talk about the residency requirement. We know we heard from Palm Springs, it's unenforceable without their joke ankle bracelets. We also heard from a number of people that parents who are getting older may not be able to come to the island for those 30 days, depending on their health. And so it seemed to Grant and me in talking it over that one compromise would actually use what Stephen Cohen is suggesting. But the reason why would be an act of simplicity, it would totally remove the 30-day residency and also get rid of the worries about the Commerce Clause. So, so what Grant and I were thinking was, let's say we do have for new properties that are new STRs, we have a three-year limit of, I don't know, three or four turnovers in the summer, whatever we think allows people to make their mortgage payments, but not use it as, as an investment vehicle. Okay, so if we have that after three years, we can assume that those people are committed to Nantucket, know Nantucket, which of course is, was really the whole reason for the 30-day residency that we, that we suggested at one point. So in other words, we're getting rid of something that's impossible to enforce, the 30-day residency, while putting in something that I do think is enforceable. I think it is enforceable to say, okay, first three years, you can rent four times in the summer, let's say. After that, you can rent six or seven like everyone else. So I would suggest by using what Stephen Cohen is suggesting, that it actually adds to simplicity, makes it easier to enforce, and satisfies that need to try to make sure that people are connected to the island and are not just investors. And I'm hoping perhaps that Charity and Matt will also see it as a way to limit investor, investor-only people and, and may also wish to to support that. Thank you.
Mr. Mori?
Thank you. I, I agree with, with Jim, and I want to make a slightly different point, that the simplicity is about getting the proponents of these three separate articles behind one article. And, you know, there there, there is some complexity that's necessary here to address what is a very complicated problem. And, you know, it's, it's easy to say things like, well, let's just have 12 turnovers, or let's limit to 100 days within a year. But those are too broad. I mean, yeah, it fits all on a sheet or two of paper. But it doesn't address concerns like the one Jim brought up in, in the first meeting about a membership or, or citizenship within a neighborhood. And that's what this does. And I think it does it in a really elegant way. Where we're disincentivizing people who would purchase only for the purpose of short-term rentals and rewarding people who are members of the community, rewarding them in the way that they get more weeks that they can rent. And that would also apply to most of the year-round residents who are on Nantucket today. So I think that's important. And then to the enforcement piece, anybody who operates a short-term rental today, whether it's through Verbo, or they do it themselves, or they run through a local real estate office, somebody has to collect that rent. And whoever collects the rent has to also collect occupancy tax and remit that to the state. And that's a, you know, filing process that could match, could be mirrored by our local registry, where all of this lease information has to be provided to the town. So it's not, you know, looking at paper copies of leases at the end of the year, you know, all this can be proactive and somewhat automated. So I, I don't think it's going to be a challenge to hunt down people who are not following the rules.
Mr. Cohen?
I definitely appreciate the suggestion that we need to keep it simple, but frankly, I also think that if there is some agreement among these groups, a lot of people will, will, will show, will agree with, will, will think that that is what's important. And, and not to repeat what other people have said, but that if we're going to limit the number of turnovers someone can have in the summer, it's the same enforcement mechanism. You know, whatever the enforcement mechanism to say someone can have X number of weeks in the summer is the same way you would limit, you would say, okay, well, this person has like the junior license or whatever we call it, so they get less weeks. It's, it's, it's a, it's a very simple, easy to understand, easy to explain, easy to enforce way of discouraging, you know, eliminating the, limiting the economics of doing investor-only STRs. And I think that it's a much better way of doing it than trying to have the night's sleep, people put their head on the pillow and other things that are both, that are both invasive and unsafe and impossible to enforce. And, but I do think we, the people are going to want to see that we've done something to discourage investor-only STRs. And I think this is a a good way to do it because it's consistent with other limitations that we seem to be leaning towards putting in anyway.
Thank you. Charity?
Guess what? I completely agree. Um, I have been looking at this over the weekend, and I think the enforcement mechanism is reconciling, as Stephen Mori said, the application for renewals every year with either the I, the 1099s that the, the applicant gets from Airbnb or VRBO or whatever from the as I do in my house in Maine, I get it from my rental person, rental agent. And that is the enforcement mechanism for turnovers, changes of occupancy, excuse me. And what that does is it leaves it entirely up to the owner about whether they accept or reject a contract offer that comes into them. And I also agree, and I actually wrote up a little article today. I act, I absolutely agree with the, which is a change for me, on the issue of a limited number of rentals for the first year the property is put into service, followed by another number, which I haven't put in, but I can think of, for each additional year, as long as they abide by 123, each additional year until they get to the maximum turnovers that we decide.
I'm going to go to Grant and then ask John about writing this up, if it's doable in legislative language, et cetera. Grant?
Just quick, quickly, I just want to amplify something that Jim said. And that is, if we take away the residency requirement, the 30 days or the 28 days or whatever it is, we don't really have any vehicle to make it harder for investment STR owners. So I think it makes sense, with all due respect to Mr. Giorgio, to make it harder for people to buy a house here if they're going to rent it for short-term rentals, at least for the first three or four years. So I, I like where this is going. I can feel the love.
Charity, I'm going to go to John for comments?
I think I could certainly write this up, if that's the will of the group. And I, I do think depending upon how much progress we may make tonight, I would like permission from this group to put together what I would call a composite zoning bylaw and maybe circulate it. So we'll have something to discuss at the next meeting. But my understanding is, just so I get this right, is we would get rid of the occupying the premises for a minimum of 30 days, we would take that out completely. We would limit the number of changes in occupancy during July and August to some number. I believe it was six, maybe? That was the consensus?
I, I don't think we have a consensus on the number, but.
Okay. And also, and then we have to deal with the shoulder season as well. And then for anyone who purchases a lot or constructs a dwelling, dwelling unit after the effective date of the bylaw, they would be limited to a lower number of changes in occupancy for the first three years of either ownership of the lot or you know, the existence of a new dwelling unit.
Yeah. John, I think that we had gone back just to ownership and not to, to deal with like building permits and construction and that kind of stuff. If someone's owned their property for whatever time period, it shouldn't matter whether they do construction or not.
Okay.
Right? We care more about ownership than development or improvement.
That's fine.
Charity and then Grant?
Um, in the beginning, I was unable to communicate. And one concept, and I sent this to John late this afternoon, that I sort of came up with is the con, and it's a new concept and it may not be suitable, but the whole differentiation between hosted stay short-term rentals and non-hosted short-term rentals. And if anybody's interested in that, I can tell you about the research that I did on that. And it differentiates certainly from a standpoint of what we have in residential zones, where a lot of the properties are, that, you know, people have secondary dwellings, they are in the property, they're supervising. And I can share that with you if anybody's interested. But are you talking about removing a residential use requirement altogether? I thought, Grant, that you were going to keep that in. You wanted to keep that in. Because I have that in my article.
Grant?
Yeah, well, we were just, we were just told by Town Council that it was subject to a challenge. And we've received enough emails and letters to indicate that there are plenty of people out there who are willing to make that challenge if we, if we put that in our bylaw. So.
Requirement?
Yes. Because it's.
John?
I, I'm sorry. So just to be clear, last week I recommended against any language that would suggest a residency requirement, because I think that's where you're going to get yourself into trouble. But and I, and I saw Grant's suggest, suggestion about owner slash operator. And what I came up with was we add the definition of owner and operator to this bylaw. We use the same definition that's in the general bylaw that currently exists. And we, we key it to occupy the premises or occupy the dwelling unit by either the owner or the operator for some period of time. But I, I hear where you're going, that maybe that's not the best way to approach this in terms of having a minimum number of days that the dwelling unit has to be occupied.
Yeah. I think that that particular issue just has so many problems and is essentially unenforceable and is better addressed with other tools, you know, not, not every tool is the right tool for every problem. And I think that one is just extremely problematic. And I'm, I'm going to, at the moment, skip going through why. I think we've discussed it.
Yeah, I, I, just from my own perspective, as being on the STR work group, we, we thought the same thing. I think that was pretty unanimous as well on, on that, on that group based on council, Town Council's opinion, and also the planning expert who, who who joined several of our meetings. I'm going to go to Grant and then back to Charity.
So I just wanted to mention about the, about someone being restricted to three or four, probably three changes of occupancy for the first three years. It should, it should be for the first three years of their S, short-term rental activity, not the first three years they own their house. Because you know, I, I just got back from the beach earlier and there's a house there that's been under construction for at least four years. So those people, when they're done, they could just jump right into short-term renting under those, those rules. So I, I think it makes sense to limit their, their short-term rental activity to three years. And then bump them up to six.
So, Grant, I, I get that point, but I think that it you, you're, by going with when the house is ready or, or something like that, you're, you're overburdening, or, or when they start STR-ing, I think that really hurts the locals, because I think we have so many people. Most local people own their homes and live with them, you know, year-round. And then at some point, because of some life issue, that's when they want to STR. And I think that it would really hurt locals to say, oh, well, you, you're, 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 you want to retire, or you have to go off for medical reasons, or you, you know, you, whatever your issue is, or your parents died, but now you can only. whatever your issue is, or your parents died, but now you can only have the half share for three years. I think those are people are already in our community. If you've owned, owned the house for a certain period of time, uh, I think that's the, it's first of all, it's the simplest way to do it. And second of all, it, it doesn't disadvantage, um, uh, locals who switch from residency to, to some mixed use.
I'm going to go.
I'd love to hear what, what Jim thinks about that after, after Charity goes.
I'm going to go to Jim first.
Thank you, Tom. Real quick. So I understand your point, Stephen. Um, my thought is if someone owns the property prior to this agreement being voted in, voted in, um, they could start at the full amount. But let's say they purchased their property after this agreement is made. They would not be able to, they would, their three years would start one, when they actually begin the STR license. So, so in other words, the people that own the property now, okay, they can start at, at full board because they're, they're, you know, accepted members of the community. They've been here. Um, they put in their time. But people who buy their property after this agreement would have to have the three years begin when their STR license starts, as Grant suggested.
Uh, Charity and then Stephen?
Well, I was just thinking that, you know, when the property is put into use as an STR, might be a good, um, characterization of when the, when the, when the sequence of years starts to begin. Um, but I think we have to be careful about eliminating any kind of residential requirement because that just invites investors.
So, uh, I'm sorry, it, okay. So I, I get where you're coming from in terms of like treating people who buy it later differently. But, but again, you know, one of my core principles here is to make sure that we don't harm the locals in order to protect ourselves from this mythical, you know, investor class, which is a really a small percentage of, of the, you know, that the, maybe it might be the problem. Um, but there, it's a very small percentage. And I just think if, if I buy a house, you know, the, the day after this rule goes into place and I live here for 20 years and then I decide I want to do some STRs. I've been a member of this community. Uh, I should, I shouldn't have to start at the bottom. Like people, people, I, I think we should do it based on how long you've owned the property um, and been a member of the community in that way and not based on when you start STRing. Because frankly, if you do that, what you do is create a, a economic incentive for people to start STRing so that they get to the full benefit faster. You know, it's an artificial pressure. Um, I don't think we need to decide that now. I think we've made some progress on this issue and we can let it ruminate. But I think that it's good that we are, maybe have some consensus. We, we actually have some consensus on the idea of focusing on limiting the number of weeks in the summer for everybody, but, but less of those weeks for, um, people who would be, uh, you know, new, new to our community, uh, for whatever time period and whatever number of weeks those are. I think that's going to be a good way to discourage investor only STRs.
Grant?
Yeah, I just want to counter something you just said, Stephen, which is, um, uh, you know, we, we don't want to harm the locals and I agree a hundred percent. But I just noticed that the largest number of homes that are on the market right now are in the one and a half to $3 million range. And if we make it really easy for investors to buy those homes, they will. Cause those are the homes that they're going to make the most money on. And if we make it harder for them to short-term rent those homes, then, um, at least some of the locals are going to have an opportunity to buy at, at that ridiculously high rate, which, you know, I don't know how they do these days.
I, I, I agree. If I could respond, I, I totally agree with you. People who are buying homes now or buying those homes in the future should be, should get a lesser, should have a lesser economic opportunity to make money from short-term rentals. So if I buy it now, I would, I'd have to wait three years to get from the lower level to the higher level. But if I buy it now and I live in it for 10 or 15 or 20 years, I should have, that, that should make up the difference. I guess what I'm saying is by using.
I agree.
Yeah. So if we use the, the length of ownership as opposed to when you start S, short-term renting, we are then not disadvantaging people who actually lived here first. Um, and or who were in the community. I think the main thing that we want is to encourage people to be part of our community for some period of time before they, before they can get the full benefit of the, you know, bigger number of weeks. And, and that, and, and that shouldn't be held against people who start short-term renting later. Nor do I want to create an incentive for them to start S, short-term renting now because they want to, they need to like fake three years out from their retirement, right? That's not, that's not really satisfying or a goal that we have. It's just creating, you know, complications.
I think we agree in principle.
Yeah, okay. Good.
Uh, Stephen and then Matthew? Um, Steve Mark?
Yeah, thank you. I, I actually meant to lower my hand, but it was the, it was essentially the same point. That I think that, you know, the reason we were talking about this step where you get more leases later was about, uh, citizenship and about being part of a community. And I think that starts when you buy a property and not when you start to short-term rent. So I, I think we satisfy what I understood to be the initial goal. If we look at three years from ownership and not three years from the first one.
Matthew?
Yes, uh, excuse me. Uh, this is a momentous day. This is the second thing I agree with Mr. Kova on. So, um, I, I, yeah, I think it should be for any kind of new people coming into the market buying. Um, one of my concerns is, you know, you, there's been people in the past that have been against any kind of regulation on short-term rentals, not because they short-term rent now, but because if, you know, they pass along and they leave the house to their kids or something that they want to be able to know and secure, be able to have their property rented if their kids can't afford it. And I think if a situation like that, um, or hardship or something comes along for, for somebody that's been here for a number of years, we shouldn't be limiting them, you know, from the beginning. Uh, I think it definitely distracts or, you know, keeps investors away or makes them think at least twice about entering the market when they, when they are limited and they don't have, you know, that, uh, that option of, of just taking off with a full amount of days or turnovers allowed, so.
Charity? Charity and then John?
I just want to point out that from the, uh, STR work groups analytics, 23% of all sales in 2021 and 2022 were followed by an STR license. And I think that, um, is evidence of the need to, to slow that down a bit. Because if that is carrying on now, then we're, we are inadvertently incentivizing people, um, to just, you know, get a mortgage, uh, have the income payoff, pay the mortgage, maybe a trip to Europe or something like that. But I mean, it's, I think we have to be aware of some of those data points before we start jumping into making sort of arbitrary decisions about the.
Mr. Giorgio?
Uh, yes. So to be clear, if we put in this concept of three years of, the first three years of ownership, what happens if I inherit a house from my parents? I'm not, I would not be limited to the three years?
John, I, I would, um, put in an exception for, uh, inheritance and divorce, similar to the way the land bank does its waivers. Um, it's, nobody is, nobody is hopefully getting divorced or murdering people, uh, for the oper, STR to have an, an, uh, an STR opportunity. Um, we're really talking about new purchases. But I do want to back up and say I wholeheartedly agree with Charity's last, uh, statement. And if, and if that's true, that 22% of the purchases last year also applied for an STR, um, that's a striking statistic. I don't, I haven't heard that. Uh, but I think it really just goes to show the, uh, you know, the number one way you slow that down is by telling people you can only have, let's say, half as many weeks as someone else for three years. You know, the econ, that kills the economics of that investment. It's already an extremely difficult investment. But if you tell people, you know, you don't get, you can only, other people get X weeks and you only get X, you know, divided by two for the first three years, that's going to scare away, uh, a lot of investor only STRs. You'd need a, a pretty big stomach to have to wait to the fourth year to be able to do it. Um, you know, it's not, they already don't pencil out. So that would, I think really you'd see us drastic dropping that number.
John, do you have a follow-up? John?
Uh, yes, I, I do. So one of the things I, um, am going to recommend we add to this zoning bylaw is the severability clause, similar to the one we have in the general bylaw. Um, so if we do run afoul of a commerce clause claim or something like that, the entire bylaw does not go down. It would basically sever any provision that's found by a court to be, for lack of a better word, illegal. So I, I think we should add that. And then going to Charity, who was, um, and Charity, I apologize for not getting back to you before this meeting, but I've had quite a day. Let me just put it at that. Um, there was discussion about last week exempting cottage colonies.
Right.
What, and if you go back to the general bylaw that was proposed by the work group last November, there was also an exemption for hosted stays. And I was wondering, is that what you're talking about now? Adding hosted, hosted stays back into the, into the definition here and exempting them from this bylaw? I wasn't quite clear what you were proposing.
If you get the article and I can share it, it, it essentially creates two, instead of an accessory short-term rental and something else, it creates a hosted stay short-term rental with a very finite, uh, definition that's, I took from, uh, another community. And then a non-hosted short-term rental. And it's a proxy or a little different way of approaching the idea that if somebody lives in their property and they, let's say they live in the primary most of the year, but then they move into the secondary and they are on the premises for the entire period of time that the property is short-term rented. Um, that they, even though that they, they would be bound by the seven, whatever, um, number of, of, um, maximum weeks are selected for July and August, they would not have any limitations on shoulder season or other, uh, changes of occupancy. So that, and then I shouldn't even say this. But I mean, there may be a way of working that into the land use chart. Um, that would essentially distinguish, but very noticeably between the permissions of the, uh, hosted community and the non-hosted community. And there are places where both in that article, where both the hosted and non-hosted have to comply with, you know, things like Article 123 and all of that sort of thing. And then I did put in a provision for, um, the, uh, hosted or non-hosted cottage colonies. And exempting them as long as they have some kind of documentation or from the buyer Navitay that, that they have since 1972, um, rented their properties. And, um, and then they would be exempt from uh, everything except the, uh, the maximum number of rentals in July and August.
John, do you have a follow-up?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I don't.
I'm going to go to Ms. Cronell.
I have two questions. Number one, of the 22% you quoted Charity, how many were already STRs? Do you know that? And of the 78% that were purchased were some of those STRs and now no longer are. So that data would be more meaningful with that extra knowledge, which I hope you have.
Well, I think with all of these 39 pages, there's that, that is in there. Um, but the one thing that struck me was that, you know, the transfer, uh, whether, whether they were already STRing or not, but they continued. Uh, if they continued, they continued, but 23% of the sales were triggered by the right to be able to STR immediately after the transaction.
Yeah. And my question remains, they may have been STRs already. And with the new owners, they just were intending to continue renting. So it's, they're not, we don't, because the, when you look at the registry of who's registered as an STR, uh, the STR numbers registered, um, whilst that number has gone up, the actual number of people, when you look at the taxpayers, has gone down for the last two years. So it's, you know, I think the data has to be complete in order for a, a reasonable assumption to be made.
Well, it's all in Mr. Hapken Recur's presentation to the, um, STR work group.
Okay, I'm going to go to Jim.
Thank you.
And then Matthew?
I want to stay with the big idea that it's great that we seem to be coming to some sort of consensus about limiting the first three years, however we work out the, the details of it. I do want to just take a, a brief, um, move over to the hosted stay issue and just say, I really felt, um, on the STR work group, that by exempting hosted stays as well as exempting cottage colonies, that we solve the problem, that it's, it's a good solution. Um, hosted stays are so different. The people are living in someone's home. It's almost like having family in a sense. So I think that's a good solution. I don't want to dwell too long on it, however, although I totally agree with Charity that it's very different from, from normal STRs. But I, I want to just say, um, we seem to have some building consensus on the first three years, having fewer changes of occupancy. I think that's a, a huge development for us. It will make it unnecessary to have a residency requirement. It will stop investor only or limit investor only. And I think it will be very good for, for the community. So I hope we, we, in, in discussing all these details, let's not lose sight of that. This is a big development and let's, let's run with it. Thank you.
Agreed.
Stephen or Stephen?
Uh, let, Stephen Maury go first?
Thank you. Um, this may be a question for, uh, John Giorgio. Um, a hosted stay, I think means that the owner of the property is on the property somewhere. And they may be renting a separate, uh, dwelling, or they may be renting a portion of the dwelling where they're living. Wouldn't that fall under accessory use? I mean, by almost any definition, isn't that accessory and therefore exempt from what we're talking about?
Well, Stephen, um, I would, I guess I would encourage you all not to, um, make assumptions about what would be considered an accessory use and what would not. Um, uh, just because it's a pretty, I mean, it, it's.
Sure.
It's, it's, it's sort of encourages a case by case or requires, I should say, a case by case analysis as to whether it's incidental and, um, um, incidental to the primary use. So, you know, if, what happens if.
Rest of the group and say, is not that the type of, um, use that we would all say is acceptable? You know, somebody's living on their property and renting out their cottage, is that, is that not the type of use that we'd like to protect? I mean, these are.
I agree with that.
Iran residents.
So did you want to include an exemption for hosted stays as well as cottage colonies?
Yes, and, and I think I would, I, I think that everybody who's spoken on this topic has um, agreed to some version of that. Um, I think I differ with Charity because I don't think even in July and August, uh, these hosted stays ought to be limited to their changeovers.
Yeah. I, I, I agree with that. And just to piggyback, um, I, I would, my suggestion would be not to create a separate zoning category for hosted stays so much as to when we have a final list of our rules, identify certain rules that don't apply to hosted stays. Because there are definitely some rules that we're going to want to apply to all STRs regardless. But that if we are, if we are trying to make limitations in some ways that are based on community impact, uh, a hosted stay would get an exemption from maybe the number of turnovers or, you know, wherever we end up. So I think that that's maybe the last question we want to look at is what, uh, which of the rules would we exempt from hosted stays, for hosted stays? Which I think is a, a good idea because if you're either living in the same dwelling or on the same property, that should accomplish a lot of, uh, what we're trying to do here. Um, so I, but I would say we'd look at that question last, based on the number, on, and see which rules apply to that theory.
Matthew?
Uh, thank you. Uh, just to get it back on topic, um, one.
one, I would just want to make sure that we put something in there for the first three years, including current residents buying a secondary property or something like that, or adding properties to their portfolio. They still have to wait the three years to get the maximum number, even if they are currently STRing other properties.
Uh, yeah, based, based on the year of ownership, not, you know, if you own X property, you buy Y. The Y property starts its own clock.
Yes, yes.
That's what I understood it to say. So
Yeah, it doesn't run with the person. It runs with the, essentially the, the title.
The dwi- the dwelling unit.
Yeah, right. Yeah, for the ti- the title for that property.
Good, yeah, I just, the, the, we don't want current investors expanding their portfolio with a loophole or anything like that, so.
The, the differential would be based on the ownership of each property that they own. New properties would not be exempt because you had been here before somewhere else. So maybe we're ready to, to move on to next.
I don't think you've resolved the issue of the shoulder season and what limits you would want to, if any, place on changes in occupancy during
Here, here you go, here you go, here you go. Here, take this. Charity, I think you have a comment about the, what we're still on, and we'll go to that.
Well, I, I think that if we are going to essentially use the reporting sys- uh, system that we should either be able to get from the state or IRS or, or some governmental organization to confirm the number of occupancies or changes, changes of occupancy. That should be, and that's a, that's a number that has to be decided. Is it going to be six? Is it going to be eight? Is it going to be 10? Is it going to be whatever? And if, you know, and if you, if you limit the number in July and August, it's, you know, you're really forcing the owner to make serious decisions about the contract they're going to accept or reject. And I, that, if we can get to that point and not deal with minimum days and maximum days or whatever, you know, that'll be a controlling number. It'll be the number that a change or transfer of ownership will be trying to get to. So if you have three, three and three, if the number is 10 or whatever, then they'll aspire to get to 10. And, and that's a calendar number, a calendar number of changes of occupancy.
Steven?
So I, I said this a little bit last time, but I think if we limit turnover in the, either annually or in the shoulder season, you're essentially killing the shoulder season. And I think that that would be really unfortunate. And I don't think that that's where the primary problems come from. We just don't have that many, as many people here then. And I, I think it's really important for us to protect the shoulder season and to, it's a, it's a, it's a time when people can come when Nantucket is more affordable. It's a time when people can come when Nantucket is less crowded. And it, and it's a time when, you know, it just works for a lot of people. And I, I don't, I think the biggest problem that we have is all this turnover in the summer and less so in the fall. My recommendation essentially would be to do, you know, eight changes of occupancy in the summer and unlimited outside of that. And then if you have a problem with, you know, noise ordinances or whatever, that should be enforced through fines and, uh, you know, non-renewal licenses. And if you have eight turnovers in the summer, that, you know, there's generally, depending on how the calendar works, eight to nine full weeks in July and August. So that would essentially create a minimum stay and, you know, effectively a minimum stay of a week. You know, you couldn't have, uh, so you wouldn't have these, these short, quick, you know, rapidly, whatever. But if people wanted to do shorter turnovers, shorter leases and have their places empty some, that, that they'd be able to do that. If they wanted to just do long weekends in the summer, they should be allowed to. That's, that should be their prerogative. We should concentrate on that. And I think that if you did eight weeks during the July and August, uh, you could essentially cut that in half for the, for the people who have owned their property for less than three years. And if someone knew they, they could get four weeks, then they could, you know, definitely as a huge incentive, huge disincentive towards investor only. And so that, I think that's my, that'd be my recommendation.
Mr. Solzer?
Yes, I, I agree in principle with everything Steve, Stephen said, and I do think, living here on Backstreet, the so-called churn in summer is much, much worse than it is in the shoulder season. The drunken behavior also happens in the, in the summer, as in the shoulder season, and, but there's more people, more traffic, more noise. I would disagree with, or, or not disagree, differ a bit with Stephen on the numbers. I think six is probably a good number for the summer. People can rent a couple of weeks perhaps, you know, four at one week and, and two at two weeks. Maybe a compromise of seven, but I couldn't see going above that. I do agree with Stephen wholeheartedly, though, that, that having an unlimited number in the shoulder season is, is good for the island. It's good for the businesses that do all sorts of things, from weddings to tours to everything. And I know from living here for 42 years that the, the traffic in September, October is, is not that bad. The noise is not that bad. And this is, this is a part of our economy that I think can grow a bit more even without causing trouble, but actually helping people. So I, I, I'd like to again, agree with Stephen that we have a, a good limit in the summer. I would suggest six as July and August and unlimited in the shoulder season.
Charity?
Well, going back to the Happen Rapper report, there was a, of all of the changes between an average of 2017 to 2019. And then in 2022, there was a 231% increase in the off-season. But that, you know, that may not be a very large number. I think the issue in the summertime is the arrival of small armies of children. And they have to be taken here, they have to be taken there, and that, you know, and then shopping and feeding and all of that. But I don't think you have that so much in the shoulder season. And you're, and I'm not, certainly not saying anything about children, but I think that there is a very substantial dynamic in the summertime that doesn't exist in the autumn. The other thing is the days are shorter. And it's not, and it gets colder, or it is colder in the springtime. And there's not as much incentive for people to be outdoors and, you know, causing a ruckus or something like that. So that's my only comment on that.
If, if I may, I wholeheartedly agree with no limit in the shoulder season. Uh, that, that was the works group, the work group's recommendation based on dozens and dozens of letters. And I think that, that it says that Nantucket is unwelcoming in certain ways to do that. We, we are, we're trying to, a- as, as John, as town council advised us for a long time in the purposes intent section, the rational basis section, you have to back it up to the Attorney General, it to, to courts, et cetera, and, and to lay out your, your rationale for what you're putting in there. And, and I think that the summer season is, as Jim put it before, so-called churn. To me, the shoulder season is not that. And I don't know, I don't know what else the rational basis would be. Just, I don't mean legally, I just mean for my own in thinking about it, as, just as a Nantucketer, but also as a Sliwward member, I, I, I cannot support that. So if, if you'll permit me to editorialize on that. Matthew?
Yeah, I, you know, I still wholeheartedly believe there should be a annual number of turnovers, but in the spirit of compromise, I, I'm willing to, you know, like, like Stephen says, this isn't the hill I'm willing to die on. You know, but I'd be more around Jim's number of six in, in July and August. Um, my only fear with no limits in the shoulder season is that's when, you know, school's back in session. We need the teachers and, you know, the current posted the other day, they're looking for housing for teachers. Um, and I think that would help, you know, by limiting that, discourage people, maybe start, you know, focusing on the summer months for short-term rentals and then moving it with some sort of a limit, maybe push, have a year-round renter in there instead. And for September through October, you know, through, or for, excuse me, September through June or something for, um, you know, the teachers, things like that, just to kind of keep a steady income. Um, but that's, that's my personal belief. It's, you know, I think we're, we're gonna hit a very dangerous point here soon with the schools. And that very much worries me as a father of three kids.
Steven? Steven, you muted?
I think we made a tremendous amount of progress if we're at the idea that, you know, we may not limit the shoulder season. We definitely should limit the summer, and we should have a two-tier uh, limit for that, uh, for people who've owned their property for less than three years and people who've owned it for more. I, I, I'm at four and eight. I, what I'm hearing is Jim's at maybe four and six or four and seven. Um, you know, I think we could, uh, maybe put a pin in this one and, and let it ruminate and, and move on. Because I think we're, we're close and we should sit on it a little bit.
Sounds good. That, that gives, um, that is since this John has volunteered to draft up this, uh, potential article, that that gives a good placeholder for that, uh, charity.
No, I think if you do that, and then you leave blanks for the numbers, I mean, I think then we can, we can chew on that a bit. My, I, my preference would be three for new, new, new owners, uh, for the first year and then go up from there. But that can all be decided later, but we can put the numbers in later as long as the concepts are solid and we can gather around those. Thank you.
What's that, Steven?
Oh, Tom, I was just gonna suggest, you know, that we, I think we sort of covered eight and nine already in the sense that there doesn't seem to be, uh, any consensus on limiting on, on minimum stays. And I think we're doing that with turnovers and occupancy instead. And there doesn't seem to be any consensus on requiring non-STR use. So I would suggest we move on to 10, which I think should be a relatively agreeable point.
Okay, 10 prohibit STRs in some structures, A tertiary dwellings, B inclusionary housing. Matthew?
Yeah, like I said before, I really think we should prohibit them. I would, you know, go as far as saying, you know, doing like a pre-existing use currently, maybe not banning them outright for the current that are, for the people that are currently STRing. But I think any new registries in, in condos and townhouses should not be granted. You know, just in the spirit of compromise, because I, I still think that that is a price point that can be, is still obtainable for the workforce of this island. And I would like to preserve that as much as we can. I'd like to hear, you know, maybe other people's thoughts, but that's, you know, I, I, like I said, I'd be willing to agree to some, like, no new STRs in these condos and townhouses, but, uh, yeah, I'd love to hear what everybody else thinks.
I'm gonna go to Grant.
Yeah, I agree with Matthew that, um, that a lot of these condos are just ripe for someone to come in and try to get into investing at a low price point. And they really should be for firemen and teachers and, and people like that. So I, I don't know if we can ban those entirely, you know, short-term rentals in, in apartments and condos. But, um, but I would hope that, I would hope that um, folks on the planning board would not allow a major commercial development unless, unless they restricted short-term rentals in their, in, in a building that offered condos or something like that. Because we don't, we don't allow them in, in covenant homes, you know, I have a second dwelling. Maybe it's gonna be a covenant home someday, and I'm more than happy to, to keep that, you know, out of the short-term rental pool. But, uh, well, it sounds like Dave Iverson has a solution for us.
Steve, I'm gonna go to Dave since he hasn't spoken yet.
Sure.
Dave?
I, I claim to have no solutions, but, um, uh, listen, um, I, I think in a lot of, um, in, in a lot of MCDs, in, in a lot of situations where there's apartments over commercial spaces, we are already, we're already restricting that use to either year-round or employee use. So, um, I, I 100% support the idea of doing it. I think that, um, if it's possible, we should, any, any housing that includes a affordable component, any development, I believe shouldn't, shouldn't be allowed to have STRs in it, in my opinion. And that includes apartment buildings, condos, and, and those sorts of things, because, um, it's just not in the spirit of what we're trying to do in, in those kind of developments. So, um, I support the idea. Um, I think that the planning board has, has taken care of that in, in in the past few years in some of the developments, but I think it would be easier if we, um, yeah, i- if we got rid of that in some way or, or banned it. So
Dave, do you have any other comments or red flags that you have heard from the, from a planning board perspective on what we've been discussing tonight?
No, I, listen, I think I'm really pleased at, at how you guys are all working through this. I think that, um, it seems like you're, you're in a good place and you're getting work done. And, um, and no, I mean, I, I do have concerns about limiting. And again, I, I mentioned it earlier on in the, in, in this adventure that, you know, we, we've got a, a large number of people that try to do the right thing here, and that's rent in the long term in, in the winter to teachers, to doctors. And I just hate to see someone that rents for eight and a half months to, you know, a, a doctor, a nurse, a teacher. And then when that eight and a half months is over, they're, they're really limited to what they can do um, as far as short-term rentals in season. So I, I don't know how you juggle that, or, or if it just adds a layer of complexity. But I, I think that we, we need to be rewarding, rewarding people to do the right thing. So, and, and I don't know how to do that. So.
Thanks, David. Steven, I'm gonna go to John real quick.
So I have a question. In, um, Article 60, we, um, we prohibited short-term rentals in deed-restricted uh, dwelling units. Also, the work group, I believe, had re- you know, proposed in the general by, bylaw, restricting apartment buildings from having short-term rentals. Um, so I guess my question is, do we put this in zoning or do we just put all of this in the general bylaw? Or do we put them in both?
Steven?
So, um, John, I think that is a good question. And I think it sort of depends on whether or not you want to create legacy rights or not, which this is sort of a separate question we should answer first. I, I guess what I would say is, um, first of all, condo is a legal form of, of ownership and is not, doesn't mean what, what I think Matt is the way people use, not Matt. It doesn't mean what most people, uh, the way most people use it. Um, so I, I guess what we would want to do is, my, my intent in, in number 10 is to suggest that there are certain types of dwellings in which, um, STR should not be allowed. So we have already prohibited STRs in affordable restricted units, and we have already prohibited STRs in timeshares. And, and I think that there's general agreement that we should also prohibit STRs in tertiary dwellings, because tertiary dwellings by their very nature have to have a, either have to be owner-occupied, uh, owned by a charity or nonprofit, or have a year-round restriction on them. So I think we want to make, I think it makes sense to ban them there. I also think it makes sense to ban them in inclusionary housing. Uh, I think I told Matt to his question last time, inclusionary housing. Inclusionary housing is generally employee housing that's i- included within MCD permitting, but it's not subject to the primary secondary dwelling rules. Um, so then i- if we're good on that, and I think we are, um, the question really is what other kinds of, of dwellings do we want to, uh, also prohibit STRs in? And, you know, I heard one person say, any, any development in which there is an affordable unit and I'd be really hesitant to go that far because, um, one, it, it's a you know, I don't know that banning STRs in the entire development just because there's, there's some affordable units there. And in fact, we don't want to make it, we're going to want to discourage people from having affordable units because uh, the other units would be negatively impacted by that. But we can, we can sort of set that aside because I'm not sure that it was meant that way. Um, but saying that you want to prohibit it in condos actually creates a number of problems because the condo form of ownership is how all of, you know, or co-ops and those kind of things. All of the units on the Daffodil Evergreen neighborhood are set up that way. All of Nasha Quissette is set up that way. All of, um, you can, you can get an exemption from, um, the zoning bylaw if you have two structures that predate 1972. So there are a number of single-family homes in which those two homes are on one lot are owned by as condo units. Um, so I don't think that the, that using that word, uh, accomplishes, um, what people want it to. Now, if people are talking about, um, either apartment buildings or mixed-use, uh, apartments, which I think is what we're getting at. Those are both defined terms within the zoning code. And we can talk about whether or not STR should be allowed in those two. I, I would actually take the position that they should be allowed bec- for a couple of reasons. One is you're already talking about high density. You're already talking about mixed commercial use and you're talking about people who are at an entry point where um, they may, uh, really need that money. Um, and, 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 you know, I don't know that we should be trying to use short-term rentals as a way to, to you know, control the housing market. It seems like maybe a step too far. That, that said, uh, we could have this conversation because I'm not sure it's, you know, the thing I feel the strongest about. But I'm, but I'm hesitant to discourage people who are in smaller apartments or smaller buildings or who live above commercial things that were, you know, we're taking away something from them.
John, follow up?
Steve, um, you know, you're, that's, that's really more of a policy question. Um, but I was wondering when you say inclusionary dwelling units, what do you mean by that?
I mean, employee housing permitted under MCD, uh, rules that allow for uh, how that are either, uh, there are supposed to be either for use related to the MCD and generally are beyond the scope of the primary secondarily dwelling, um, limitations.
Leslie, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you have anything to offer on this proposal? Sorry, Leslie.
Sorry, I was, uh, kind of working on something else at the same time, so I wasn't really set up. Are, are we still talking about inclusionary housing?
Yeah, what is, how would you define that?
So we have an inclusionary housing definition in the zoning bylaw. And, um, just in a nutshell, it's, it's housing that is required by the planning board for employees of a particular business, um, when the business, um, has to go through generally the major commercial development process. So that's, um, housing wouldn't really be available for short-term rentals anyway because it would already be restricted to employees of the business. But I'm sure that's something that the planning board would be willing to include or something that we could add, you know, to that definition that's in the zoning bylaw if warranted or, or necessary.
John?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm just thinking from a drafting standpoint, I wanted to ask that question. Um, so I think, why, why don't you continue to talk and let me mull on that and, and I'll get back to you before the end of this session.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Dave.
I just want to, and I think that Steven's description of condominiums i- is spot-on. Condos on Nantucket aren't like an apartment building you see anywhere else. They're basically a shared piece of land that you have two dwellings or more on with separate ownership, right, Steven? And my describing correctly. So, um, I, I think he's correct there. My, my problem is with, with how, with housing that has an affordable component is, is my concern is that just because you can't afford a market rate house, you shouldn't be put in a situation where you live in a, now what's would be considered maybe a more transient neighborhood because there's STRs surrounding you. And, and that's my reasoning for that piece. Uh, agree with it or, or don't, but that, that's where I'm coming from. So, thank you.
Leslie?
I just wanted to read to you all the definition of inclusionary unit. I didn't have that handy a minute ago. Um, it's defined in the zoning bylaw, any rental dwelling unit required pursuant to chapter 139, section 11H, which is our major commercial development bylaw, restricted to employee occupancy. So by definition, it's restricted to employee occupancy. So it wouldn't be eligible for short-term rental.
I'm gonna go to Grant.
I just wanted to answer Mr. Giorgio's question about whether this should be in the zoning bylaw or the general bylaw. I think just tactically, if we can put the, all the things that we think are a slam dunk from the voter's standpoint in the general and, um, and try to keep the complexity out of the zoning bylaw, then it's going to make it easier to pass the zoning bylaw. So the fewer things that we have to, you know, amend or change in the zoning bylaw, the better. So if there's something that's appropriate for the general bylaw and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't require any sort of legacy provisions or anything like that, I, I, I would love to have two bylaws that, you know, it's always nice to get the voters nodding on something they can agree with first before we tackle the really thorny stuff.
All right, go back to Leslie. I see Mr. Sullivan has his hands up and I just want to say that, um, we're not doing public comment tonight. Okay, thank you. Uh, go back to Leslie.
Thanks. Um, just to touch on, you know, adding things to the zoning bylaw or adding things to the general bylaw, you all were talking earlier about enforcement. And enforcement through zoning is very difficult to effectively achieve compliance. It's, it's time-consuming, not from the staff perspective necessarily, but it's time-consuming to do the enforcement because of statutory timelines that are involved with that. And the, the enforcing through the general bylaw through the Board of Health, which is the enforcement agent that's already outlined in chapter 123 is much more efficient, um, has a little more teeth and it's much more effective. I mean, they can take swift action. Zoning enforcement takes time. So just want, keep that in mind when you're thinking about, um, where to put things. And, and you know, obviously some things will have to go in zoning, but if it doesn't need to be there and people concerned about enforcement, the general bylaws may be the better bet.
Leslie and I had this conversation and Leslie, my, my thought was let's put the civil penalty, $5,000 civil penalty pa- pad that's in the gen- in 123. Let's put it, the identical provision in 139. And that will, that will be an enhanced option in addition to, um, all the other enforcement, um, remedies that you have. I think it's in section 25 of the, of the zoning code. So that's what I, I would recommend we do.
And if I can just say, I, I don't disagree with that. I just want you all to keep in mind timing. With zoning, you have to notify the owner. It has to be to a person. It can't be to a business or an LLC. They have so many days to respond, then they have so many days to appeal. And in some of these cases, the season could be over. So while having it in both is good, I think don't discount putting it in the general because the, the Board of Health has different remedies that they can take that are outside of what we can do through zoning.
Steven?
So, uh, I think that I would recommend that we put off a ban on, um, STRs in apartments uh, which are residential-only buildings and also in apartment buildings, which are mixed-use buildings for two reasons. Uh, one of them is that, um, essentially, you know, most of downtown and a lot of commercial areas already have a lot of these apartments. And it would be extremely unfair to, to suddenly prohibit it for those people who own those. Um, and it would essentially keep it out of, you know, areas that are, that are currently rented that way. But, but also where, where there's not necessarily a need for it because those are busy areas to begin with. Um, but, but also the, um, if you do a new apartment or a new apartment building, those are subject to planning board special permits. So there's already a mechanism for the planning board to say, okay, you, you can have your planning board special permit, but you can't do STRs here. And I would encourage the planning board to do that. And in fact, I know from personal experience that that is becoming a common term for them to consider, you know, when it's appropriate. And sometimes it is and sometimes it isn't. So I would say we might want to, um, see if that works on its own and maybe revisit that at, at a phase two, if it seems like that's a problem area. Um, because, uh, the beauty of the bylaw as opposed to the zoning code is that it's, there's no legacy rights and it, it's essentially, uh, could, could create that prohibition. We don't have the, you know, the grandfathering problem. So I would, I would suggest putting off, um, the idea of banning them in apartments and apartment buildings. And let's see, um, i- if we can, uh, deal with, you know, what I think we have is a very substantial, uh, and successful agreement in progress here, um, with the idea that that's, there are other tools potentially to deal with those on a case-by-case basis.
Uh, Matthew?
Yeah, so just to, again, in the spirit of compromise and so I'm understanding really correctly. I understand, you know, we are, some of our terms on it is traditional, probably it's, uh, other towns, you know, my house, you know, we live in a covenant and my house is considered a condo. So I understand the uniqueness. Um, but I really liked Mr. Iverson's idea there. I think, uh, he makes a very valid and great point about, um, any place that does have deed restricted should not be eligible. Is that possible through, uh, Mr. Giorgio? Or, um, any place, yeah, like the Richmond River, things like that.
That's already, uh, included in chapter 123. No STRs in deed restricted affordable housing units.
I understand that, but I'm saying as far as the how, the ones that are not deed restricted, that include a deed restricted complex.
John, I think what they're saying is anytime there's a deed restricted unit that associated units that are market rate and unrestricted would also be no STR. And I guess my concern with that is you are now telling people that if they do a affordable housing development, that they would have no STRs in the other units too, which sounds like, oh, maybe you're targeting developers. But in reality, you'd also be targeting any person who creates a covenant house cannot STR their primary, their, their, uh, market rate house. It would be, it would go down to that level. Um, so I think that sounds a little overbearing. Um,
That's a good point, Steve.
Yeah.
Dave, I think you have something so in to add here.
Yeah, uh, Stephen, I don't think that's correct for the covenant law because
No, it is, well.
Separate lot. So.
Well, some of them are condos.
Okay.
And, and, but it's the same, it's the same development because like you're talking on, if you do a 40-unit thing and 10 of them are affordable, those other 30 units are all separate lots also.
Uh, agree. Uh, but, but the covenant lot typically is a separate lot. Some of them are condo. We're trying to get away from that. But, but I, I think that, and, and trust me, Stephen, I've got texts since I've said these things with a lot of people that aren't pleased with me. But, um, I, I feel that apartment buildings are the most affordable housing units we have on this island right now. And, and I think that they should be protected and that's, that's my personal feeling. I, I'm, you guys have your articles. I'm just giving you my feelings about it and my concerns.
Okay, so Dave, I do have a technical question, which is an apartment building is technically a mixed commercial use building. So you're talking about residences over commercial. I think that you mean apartments, which are residential only. But I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm looking for that clarification.
Yes, I mean, most apartment buildings that are, at least in my experience, I think a lot of them end up to be MCDs if they're mixed-use and we usually restrict that.
It's required, it's a, it's a planning board required
Yeah.
Special permit.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, and those are restricted anyway.
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess what I would say is both of you, both of those ideas, apartments, which are residential only, apartment buildings, which are mixed-use and new subdivisions are all opportunities for the planning board to put that restriction in, in a case-by-case basis. So for example, the planning board is, is currently authorizes, you know, a new 10-lot subdivision will say only five lots can have a second dwelling, you know, or whatever. I think the planning board could easily say only five lots can have STRs. Um, you know, like it, there, there's a mechanism to do that that is more case-by-case that might be better without having the unintended consequences of what I'm concerned with.
I mean, the mechanism, there's a HOA, I think, I, I.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's another way to do it too. Um, so I, I, I guess I would say when you're talking, if you're talking about limiting new subdivisions and limiting new apartments or apartment buildings, that's already going through the planning board process.
That, that is true. I am just more, but you know how boards change, my friend. Um, and I, I'm just more concerned about apartment buildings or, you know, I'm, I'm just really concerned that, that if we don't restrict them in some way, the most affordable housing units we have will become a little less affordable because i- i- if, if they're going to be rented short-term, we know they're going to be rented for a lot more than, than they would be for year-round.
Okay, but, but just for clarification, when you say apartment building, I think you mean apartments, which are the residential only.
Yes, apartments. I will back that down.
Yeah, I, right, I, it, it's a, it's a, it's because the, the bylaw itself is written with language, you know, nearly identical language. It's not, not trying to.
You're 100% right, Steven.
Yeah, okay, so.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to Jim since he's been patiently waiting for a long time.
Thanks, Tom. So there's three quick points. One, I think our group totally agrees about apartments, that if they can be limited, perhaps prohibited from STRs, that would be a good thing. Um, on general bylaw versus zoning, that's something way out of, I think my depth and maybe Grant's, but what Leslie, Leslie said about, um, enforcement does seem to argue toward putting as much of it in general bylaw as we can. So I, I'd like to support that. And finally, um, uh, through you, Tom, to John. John, I know you're going to be drafting this up. We really appreciate it. I'm pretty sure that the numbers that you might put in, well, I, I'm pretty sure the charities group and my group agree that that six, uh, six turnovers, six, uh, changes of occupancy in summer for people who already own their property. And then three for new owners or new operators, whatever. That's probably where we are. I'm not saying there, there won't be room for compromise, but that's where we are. And maybe, uh, Steven and Steven are, are more at the eight and four. So I think, um, I think you could put maybe both sets of numbers in or something, but, um, I, I do.
The instruction I got, Jim, what I heard was to leave those numbers blank in the draft that I sent around.
Okay, um, and if that's what Tom wants, that's, that's absolutely fine with us. I just want to give a sense of the meeting that that's where we stand on it.
Yeah, Jim, I think that's a good idea is to leave the, the numbers blank in John's draft. And then maybe, um, if, if Grant is so willing to update this chart and then we can hash that out.
Happy to do it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, thinking, thinking about it a little bit, um, you know, again, the, the point here is to compromise, not to get everything that you want. And, you know, I, I want to specify, almost none of this is what I want because I don't own an STR. I'm not representing any specific interests here. I'm just trying to represent the, the people that, that have communicated to me about this. Um, and, and I think that there are good points that have been raised about apartments, uh, specifically. And maybe we could think about prohibitions in new apartments. Um, so in other words, people who, uh, have them don't lose their rights. But anybody who thinks they're going to go build a six-unit apartment building under the bylaw, the, any new apartments would have, would not get those. Um, I think that, uh, is something we could find some agreement on. Um, so just throwing it out there.
Matthew?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what I suggested in the beginning there, you know, um, kind of grand, you know, like the park circles that are in there, not tell them they can't do it. But any future buyers in there can't, are not allowed. Um,
Tell them they can't do it, but any future buyers in there can't, are not allowed, um. What, does that cover the, those townhouse style as well? Are those considered apartments in the Nantucket zoning code?
Um, no, tech, technically, park circle is just freestanding houses. They just happen to be built that way. They're not condos or apartments.
So what could, what could it be under like multi, is it multi-use or anything? Let me, Leslie Scott answer for that.
Leslie?
Um, I just wanted to say park circle, those are duplexes that are condo units. So I, I don't know what the confusion is on that one, unless I misunderstood the question.
Um, well, yeah, so the, each lot is a duplex and each unit is a, is a condo. But if there's forty units there, they're not related to each other. They're, they're the same as a. Single lot that happens to have a duplex on it. So if you applied this to duplexes, you'd apply it to every duplex on the island. You could, there's no. Park circle is not some kind of special development that people think it is. Uh, it's not, there's no like townhouse rule that they went under. It's the, it's the same as every duplex on Nantucket.
That's correct. Uh, what was the other question? I think it was from Matt.
Uh, yeah, just basically how, how do we categorize those? Um, because I think there's. There's going to be quite a few of those either popping up or I, I believe, you know. Those duplexes are also, you know, in that affordable range as well. And I'm not trying to single out park circle by any means. Over there, it's just, I think it's a good example of what is workforce housing and affordable housing on this island. And so. I mean, can we include with some legacy rights for, um, duplexes as well? Is there any, do you guys see any? Blowback on any special area there?
Leslie or John?
Uh, well, I, I would just say that we have duplexes all over the island in all sorts of different. Income brackets and, and different neighborhoods. We have them downtown, um, we have them in the mid-island, um, there's. There are some in Tom Nevers that are grandfathered. I mean, they're all over the place. So I think if. If people are interested in restricting those, it needs a lot more thought than we can probably do right now.
Yeah, I, I would say that's, should be phased to, to something to look at, but I do think that. For, for inclusion in this article could be any new, uh, apartment buildings. Would be prohibited from having STRs. I think I'd be comfortable with that because it protects existing rights. But tells people if you're going to do an eight or ten unit apartment building or apartment rather, um, that those can't be STRs. And, you know, and frankly, there are other ways to encourage year round housing options and I in fact have. Proposed a warrant article that, 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 that does that. And I don't want to get into the details of it, but my, I guess my point is that. We shouldn't try to use STRs to do too many things, like we don't, we shouldn't try to solve the housing crisis through. STRs, I think we should, solving STRs is hard enough on its own, uh, we should stay focused on. How to have, how to improve the STR situation, um, but I, but I think. Adding new apartments to the ban list is, is probably something, uh, that we, that we could agree on.
Charity?
Oh, on that, I would say, I, I think that Steve Cohen has a good point, but. You could also consider, uh, transfers, um, you know, if, if these apartments are owned. Or however they're occupied, transfers, uh, in the future beyond the effective date. Um, those could be short term, uh, they, they could be blocked from short term rental, um. And the other thing, um, on the numbers of. Short term rentals in the high season, you know, we're going to concede. A limit on the annual number of changes of occupancy. Um. I think a limit on the number of changes of occupancy in July and August. You know, should be a, a reasonably low number. And then, uh. Then what you would do is, you know, the, what the, uh, property owners could do is they could supplement with. Um, off-season rentals. And I would say. You know, if you're doing that and you say a limit of six, then, then that would, that would relate very well to the notion. Of new ownership of, uh, or transfers and new ownership of three to start. And then go up to, you know, maybe one a year for three years, get to six. Anyway. And then finally, I think to make this crystal clear. Uh, whatever those July and August turnovers are. Should be on or after, should begin on or after July first. And should end on or before August thirty-first.
Grant and then Stephen?
Yeah, I just want to agree with Stephen on. Apartment, new apartment buildings, um, and I also like the idea of it, you know, if you buy. Uh, an apartment building or it changes, it changes. Uh, ownership, maybe, maybe the, the short-term rental goes away, but I, I also. Agree that, um, one of the problems that previous STR article. Creators have fallen into is they try to do too much. They try to hit a home run with the article and. You know, a good. Double or even a nice base hit that drives a run in would be a good thing for us. Let's not try to like. Load this article up with all kinds of things because that just gives people reasons to stand up at town meeting and, and. Poke holes in it, so.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, Grant.
Yeah.
We, we don't want to alienate people over minor points too.
Exactly.
So I'll, so I'll offer a compromise. I, I. Originally, or my group, I should say, was originally at five weeks for the lesser, um. Uh, for the new, for new owners and nine weeks for people who've owned for more than three years. But, but in the spirit of compromise, I'd propose four weeks for people who've owned for less than three years and seven weeks. For, uh, everybody else, or for people who own for more than three years, which I think is really close. Um, you know, we're now basically talking about a one week differential, um. So, you know, I.
You're talking about, um, seven changes in occupancy.
Seven changes of occupancy for anybody who's owned for more than three years. And three, and, and four changes of occupancy for anybody who's owned for less than three years. Four changes is basically half of the summer, right? Summer is eight to nine weeks. Um, I, I think the three weeks is a little punitive, um, and I think that. Six weeks actually is kind of punitive for people who, um, otherwise. You know, are, are, have been, you know, part of our community. So I'm, I'm suggesting four and seven. And I think other people were at three and six, so I think we're close.
Grant?
Um, I think we're getting there and, uh, I don't mind being punitive with the investor. STR folks, so, um, you know, maybe it's seven and three for three years. Um, but, like I said, I think we're pretty close.
Yeah, I think we should let that ruminate a little more, but I think we're really close.
Charity?
Yeah, you could do seven, three and two for each additional year to get to seven. And then that's sort of your initiation into, uh, Nantucket life, once you get to seven.
So Charity, just to clarify, you're talking about three weeks for the first year and then you go through whatever the math is to get to seven.
Two, two years of two additional CO. And then you get to the seven.
Yeah, it, it, in my gut, I like the idea, but it is remarkably more complicated to keep track of. Um, so I, I, I tend to go with. A two-tier system rather than a graduated system just for simplicity, but the concept is not offensive.
Well, with the, with the opportunity to be able to verify with the state in terms of changes of occupancy, I think it's not complex at all. You just have, you just provide your ten ninety-nine and show that you have this and, and then you get another two or you get another.
I, I just, I just think it requires a lot more work for the staff. I think if we had two tiers, it's easier than if you have a. If everybody's on a graduated system, it's, it adds a level of complexity.
What is it for the two tiers?
Well, of. If you're less than three years, you get X, and if you're more than three years, you get Y. So it's just really clean and simple. That your graduated system, while there's a certain amount of fairness to it, adds a lot of complexity. Because then everybody's on their side or case to case, case by case basis. And from an enforcement point of view, it puts a lot of burden on the staff to figure that out. I'd rather they just be like, they could issue a. A junior license and a senior license and they know what it is, um, is my recommendation.
Well, I think we're close on that, but my interest is, you know, it's more in, uh, discouraging and faster and, uh. Behavior than it is and, um, you know, you know, I, I'd like to protect the staff, but I think. There's more at stake here than that and, um. So, but I think we're getting close.
I'm gonna go to Malcolm and then Mr. Maury.
Yes, I'm, I'm very impressed with the progress you're making. I think that's great, but I think. You're on, underestimating the staff and I want to speak for the Board of Health. Is going to have to somehow enforce this with the present staff, uh, do what you want. But at some point, we're going to have to have more people, quite frankly. And I think you're underestimating the simplicity of actually going through all these records and documents and so forth. But I'm really congratulate everyone here. This is one of the first times I've really seen. People talking to each other instead of shouting and screaming, this is weight, this is wonderful. So keep going, you're doing great and, uh, I will go fight for some staff.
If this, if there's something the town meeting likes voting for, it's more staff for sure. Um, Tom, can I suggest we just go through the other items on the list because they see, we know we could sort of cross them off? I think they're, they're relatively simple.
Yeah, can I, can I, I'm gonna take Stephen and then Jim and then we'll, then we'll run through those in the last twenty minutes.
Thanks, Tom, and I'll be brief. Um, I don't think that this is an administrative burden that, that people are describing. You know, I think we can have a proactive requirement for people to submit details of a lease before it happens. And I think that's actually probably necessary if we want the complaint hotline to work well. Um, you know, you let the STI registry know, I, maybe there's a, a, an online form or something. So that when there's a complaint about a property and somebody picks up the phone and calls the hotline. The town knows if that's a short-term rental lease, you know, and they know, um, who are the people who are responsible to. Respond within two hours, you know, all the other, uh, requirements that we have today and that we're talking about adding. So. Uh, a proactive requirement with. With the magic of computers, you can flag when there's an issue before it even happens. So I don't think. Um, a nuanced, a stepped, uh, limit like charity's describing would actually require more human power. Um, just a little bit of thought as we set up the system.
Jim?
Thanks, Tom. Um, I do like the way, uh, the charity has, has thought this out, but my concern about charities is that. I'm not sure it would discourage investors quite enough. If, if it goes up to five and already by the second season. Uh, I'm concerned that that doesn't limit investors enough, so. Um, I, I think the seven and three is, is a number that the groups are converging on. Um, I would suggest having a change after three years, uh, but. I, I'm sure I can speak for Grant too, that we would be willing to go with a charity system. But I, I'd like everyone to think about whether that really does en- encourage in, possible investors quite enough. By letting them go up to five by this.
And, and real quick, I, um, I just worry about making people at town meeting do the math in their heads. It's, we gotta get this approved. We gotta get this voted for and any additional complexity we add is going to be a problem. For us.
Charity, quick follow-up before we go on to eleven?
Well, I don't think at ATM you're going to have a lot of investors there. You may, but I think they'll be overwhelmed by the people who live here. And vote here, so, um, but I think we're getting, you know, we're, I think if, if John can. Write the article with blanks and then we can massage that a little bit at our next meeting, that would be very productive possibly.
Got it. Uh, Ms. Crono?
Yeah, so when you talk about changes, uh, seven and three, whatever the numbers end up being. It's changes in occupancy, correct? It's not weeks because there's a big difference between seven weeks and seven changes of occupancy. That could be fourteen weeks as an example, so.
Correct, yes.
Well, to keep the vernacular consistent. Thank you.
Yeah, we all agreed on changes in occupancy.
Which is the existing term in the, in the statute in the bylaw.
Then we'll stop using weeks and that'll be easier for people like me to keep track. Thank you.
Thanks Denise, uh, eleven, require compliance with chapter one twenty-three. I think we're, every, all three groups are in agreement on that.
Mm-hmm.
Twelve, requires STR properties to make. Upgrades, uh, A comply with chapter one oh-two lighting by law, et cetera, um. Charity or Matthew, going back to, or whoever wants to raise their hand?
I think this is, this is. Probably more gener- uh, general bylaw stuff. And not zoning by law stuff.
I would go even beyond that, Charity, and say some of these would be better suited for Board of Health regulations. Under chapter one twenty-three. Which already exist and will need to be amended in any event, once we're done with. Um, you know, with whatever amendments to one twenty-three we're going to make. Um, they, all, all of these can be handled through regulations that, uh, adopted by the Board of.
Grant?
I just want to say that I love all these ideas. I think they're really thoughtful and creative and. If we're going to get the DeLorean up to eighty-eight miles an hour with our flux capacitor, we're gonna have to strip out all the seats. And all of the, you know, all of the antennas and things. So the, I think these things need to be. Left by the wayside and, and included in another article at some future point and, you know, I. I pledge to stand up at town meeting and, you know. Go to the map for all of these things because I think they're great.
Stephen?
Um, I appreciate that, Grant, since I wrote the list, um, and I, I, I'm okay with the idea of stripping them out of the. Primary article that's going to move forward because I agree that at a certain point you, you get confusing and there's too much in it. Um, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure if I agree with John Giorgio, which is a very rare thing for me to say, only in the sense that. Uh, I, I think some of these may not, maybe beyond the scope of a border health reg and they're just really things we want to force the. Um, homeowners or STR owners to do to improve their properties. Um, but if he thinks they're all within a border health reg, I actually, you know, he's the expert on that more than I am, but you know, like, I think that. What we do want to do is have some mechanism that says if you are benefiting by doing an STR. You, you, you should be held to a higher level on light pollution, noise, things like that. And, and the form that that takes, whether it's a separate warrant article or a, or reg or whatever. I, I, I don't want to get lost in the weeds on that, but I do think it's important for us to, you know. Get a pound of flesh from the STR owners to, to benefit the community with, by holding them to a higher standard on. Nuisances to the extent that we can, um.
I will, I'll take a look at that, um, between now and the next meeting.
Yeah, but, but I would, in, in general, I would support the idea of. You know, doing this whatever way, keep, you know, if, if it's either its own article or we do it later or it's a border health reg or whatever, I'm, you know, like, I don't want to get lost in the weeds with it. But I, I do think that, um, holding STR owners to a higher standard is something we should do.
Charity?
I agree with Stephen and I think particularly that, the, the issue of parking is very important. And the installation of, you know, some kind of, uh, hedging or whatever. I mean, and you're talking about lot lines, um. Install a sound dampening, uh, mechanical equipment within ten feet of a property line. Some of the property lines are only five. Uh, you, the, the setbacks are only five feet. So, I mean, you have, I think you, we have to consider whether we can come. So, I mean, you have, I think you, we have to consider whether we can come together on a zoning article. And then if we can come together on some of these bylaw changes in the general bylaw, do you want to do a package? And have it all out there and have everybody get this done at once? Or do you want to, you know, dribble it along over however many more meetings we have to deal with this?
Matthew?
Yeah, I, I was kind of on the same lines of what Charity's saying. Yeah, I completely agree with Stephen, whether it's in 123 or, you know, let Giorgio kind of figure out, we, maybe we could talk about it when we get done with the zoning and then go into the general. I, I do, I think this is also, you know, his, what he's put in here is also very good to help kind of discourage investors as well, you know, it's gonna, they may look at this and say, hey, you know, they got to abide by all these laws on top of not being able to rent for the maximum amount of weeks, or maximum amount of turnovers and all this stuff. So it's just another mechanism to discourage investors in the long run, I believe as well. But I, I think, my personal opinion as far as a package deal, I kind of said at the beginning, and I, and I completely agree now, I think, you know, after four years of STR stuff, we kind of owe it to the people in Nantucket to say, hey, here we are, here's everything, here's all the regulations, here's all the rules, you know. Again, trying to keep it as simple as possible, but I think if we can get it done in one big shot, and then kind of fix the, the quirks here and there as we go on, but I think it would be great if we could, you know, get all the regulations and all of the general stuff all in one shot, and maybe not necessarily make them tied to each other, but like Mr. Cohen did with his 59 and 60 last year. I don't know if that's possible. So I mean, that's, I'll leave that up to the, to the attorneys to figure out.
Seems like a year ago, doesn't it, Matt? I, I guess I would say, if, if there's really no opposition to these concepts, I'm inclined to leave them in, or would suggest leaving them in, in the sense that I don't really see anybody at town meeting being opposed to them. I think most people at town meeting are going to think, yeah, we should be holding STR owners to a higher standard for light pollution and noise pollution and, and those kind of things. And frankly, the idea of getting it done and not coming back piecemeal sounds really good. I think people are sick and tired of this. So, you know, maybe, maybe we leave that on John's plate to, to think about and come back to it. But I, but I, what I'm hearing is that nobody thinks that this, you know, holding people to a higher standard is a bad idea. And in fact, if we come up with more things to add to this list, we should. But that sounds, it sounds like we're in agreement on, on, you know, hi, on that higher standard for STRs.
So Stephen, I'm just going through, as you were speaking, your article for the general bylaw amendments. And there's a, quite a few provisions now that I think need to come out of that because we're dealing with it in this context of the zoning.
That's fine.
So I would be happy to take a stab at coming up, I, I don't know that I can get it done by Thursday, but you know, doing something similar with with your petitioned article, paring it down, and then we would have something to talk about, I guess. In terms of a composite bylaw for the general.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you to John, are, are you talking about actually drafting bylaw language, or are you talking about listing essentially a list of terms that would then be turned into a bylaw?
No, I'm talking, I, I'm, at this point on the general bylaw, I think, I think we should just draft.
Go, go right to a bylaw?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm ready to go right to a bylaw on the, on the zoning, which I will do, and I, and I will get that to all of you tomorrow. But I think we just have, we have to pare down considerably the, your general bylaw, just.
I agree, John, I agree. But I do think, since we've got five minutes left, Tom, could we find out if people think there's a good effective date for this? As opposed, because the, the problem with zoning bylaws is that they're effective, not only when they are adopted, but technically retroactive from that, when they're posted in the newspaper, when they're posted in the newspaper, unless they have an effective date that's later. And so I think putting out a date, you know, and, and it's going to be time to, the town's going to need time to get this stuff up and running from a staffing level, from a software level, you know, those kind of things. So I would suggest we say, you know, some, sometime in 2025 as opposed to 2024. I don't know.
John, you've done this for other, other towns that you represent. Could you have any comments on that?
So, yeah, so the bylaw, the zoning bylaw will become effective the date that it's adopted at town meeting, unless a later date is specified in the bylaw itself.
Right. So I would suggest we could adopt, you know, put in a, a later effective date to allow for people to make preparations, including for the town to make preparations.
Right. And, and the other thing to keep in mind is the Attorney General is going to have to still review this bylaw and approve it. So I think we would want to make the effective date the later of, you know, approval by the Attorney General or January 1st of 2025, something like that.
Yeah. So John, my suggestion, if, if you, for your consideration would be June of 2025, which effectively gives you the longest period before the, a lot of those summer rules would kick in. Right? People would know in advance.
Well, that's a policy question you guys need to decide, you know, I, I just.
From a, from a practical point of view, from January to June is, there's, there's not, there's, we're not really prohibiting things. But, but I think both people in the town would, would benefit from having that more time. So that's, that's my suggestion of, you know, like June 1st, 2025. But again, we don't need to decide that.
May I ask the groups to sort of mull that over until our next meeting? I'm going to go to Stephen and then Ms. Cronow and then Charity.
Thank you. I, I think that section, item 12 on this sheet ought to be its own article separated. I, I don't think that there is universally agreeable as, as Stephen thinks they are. And, and I think they're generally unnecessary and, and, and not helpful to the cause of trying to get something passed. So if, if, if they must go forward at this special town meeting, then break them out and make them their own article, so that they can be debated and voted up or down without causing any undue harm to the other articles.
Yeah, I, I'd be fine with that.
I, I'm not sure what you mean.
I'm saying that in addition to a zoning bylaw and the general bylaw, there can be another general bylaw containing all the provisions in number 12, which is here on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got you. Sorry, I apologize.
Denise?
That was going to be my comment, having, you know, moderated the STR discussion now for the better part of four years at FinCom. I think it would be difficult to get all of 12 through. I mean, I'm just speaking for myself, but for example, homeowners already have to apply, comply with A. The lighting bylaw did not include pools, explicitly excluded pools, et cetera, et cetera. So I think, you know, what we all want is success coming out of the, out of the STM, and 12 might be a little bit of an anchor rather than a sale.
Leslie?
I'll just really echo what Denise said, not, not repeat, and I have some enforcement concerns with 12 because I think quite a bit of that would be done by plus. But I've already emailed John Giorgio and suggested that maybe he and I can talk and, and get our thoughts together tomorrow. So I'll save that for another time, but I just wanted to say that I'm also concerned about number 12.
Thank you, Leslie. Briefly, Dave?
Dero, Denise and Leslie.
Got it. Charity?
Well, there are some things in there that I think are very important, not the least of which is parking requirements. I think that's a big issue for people. Would this be considered as an amendment to 123? That's my first question. In other words, would this be à la carte, or would it have to be the entire package? Probably the entire package. And the other thing on the effective date, if your renewal of registrations, you know, for a certificate of registration is going to commence on January 1st, I think that needs to be taken into account when you, when you, when we start considering an effective date.
Stephen?
Just, I, I mean, I get the point that the stuff in 12 can be complicated, you know, maybe, you know, I, I'd be fine with that being put off to the 2025 annual town meeting if, if, you know, spend a little, keep, keep things simple. I think there's a lot of value there, but I, I don't oppose putting off that piece because I do see it as secondary, even if it's a good, even if I think it's a good idea.
Matthew, can it wait till Thursday or quickly?
Uh, just quickly, the, you know, I'm fine either way we go with 12 because I, I have parking requirements in my amendments to 123. So we do kind of address that as well, and we can talk about that as a group, you know, later when we get there. But I, I just wanted to make sure that doesn't get pulled out and set to the side for another day, because I agree with Charity, that's, that's a very big issue, so.
Okay, thank you very much all for joining us tonight. Two quick points that, just a reminder that for special town meeting, we only have the school for one night, so we have to, we got to get all these articles done in one night, September. And then the last one is for Thursday, just a placeholder. Ms. Perrin, who has the general bylaw article, she is a time issue, and so we will start with her, her article on Thursday right off the bat, so she can, so she can leave. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Or Stephen, did you have something?
Are we in the trailer on Thursday?
Eric online only?
No, we are hybrid, so at the trailer and by Zoom.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Thanks, everyone.
Second?
I get.
All those in favor?
I, I.
Was opposed? Thank you very much all. Good night.
Thank you.